Good evening and welcome to our Smyrna Town Council Workshop to set our meeting for our March council meeting. Before we move into our actual meeting, I'm going to ask Mark to do our prayer. And Todd, will you do our pledge? You'll stand with us, please.
Father, we just come to you today again, once again, with grateful hearts, Father, for just a beautiful day here in town. Father, we just, we feel blessed by everything you give us. We take it for granted each and every day. Father, today, we want to lift up Janaye Ebenson, Father, for the unfortunate accident that took place last week with a young lady from Smyrna High School. Father, we just pray for her. We pray for her family. We pray for all involved. And, Father, we pray for her doctors as she moves forward to try to heal from her experience and her wounds. Father, go with us now. Lead, guide, and direct us in all we do and the decisions we make for our town. Continue to watch over each and every employee that serves our town. Keep them safe. And, Father, we ask for forgiveness for all of our sins. It's these things we name, we pray in your name. Amen.
Please place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Todd and Mark. Okay, before we move into items for discussion, tonight, we have a natural gas public awareness presentation by Bert Neese. Bert, welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Hercules, thank you for giving us this opportunity once again. We have an opportunity here to not only speak with you about natural gas safety, but since our meetings are broadcast through Channel 3, it gives us a chance to get the message out to our residents as well. And I don't know if you know it or not, but the cable channel is oftentimes one of the most highly viewed channels in a municipal area. So it's a good asset for us, and we appreciate that. So we'll get started. I'm going to keep it short and sweet this year. There's it. There we go. All right. Now we'll get to the right slide. Just some basics about our system. We've grown to 296 miles of main line. Now, that is just the distribution lines. That does not include the lines that go in and out of your yards and your businesses. We're up to almost 12,000 customers. Eighty percent of our system is now polyethylene pipe. Ninety-two percent of our customers are served by that polyethylene pipe. We had 12 hits to our system in 2021. We had 16,035 excavation tickets in 2021. That meant we had a hit ratio of about 0.75 per thousand tickets. That was well below the state average and well below the national average. This year, our number of hits were higher, but our excavation tickets were higher as well, and we still managed to stay well below the national and the state average.
Can you tell the public what you mean by hits?
Hits are when someone breaks our natural gas distribution line. It could be something like a contractor with a backhoe. It can also be something that you might be doing as a resident. And we're going to talk about Tennessee 811 here in a little bit and the importance of calling them before you do any type of digging. So this year, I'm going to try to keep it simple and just cover these categories. How do I? What should I? And what if? And we'll do a little bragging down there at the bottom. You can see we attained the APGA SOAR Silver Award a few years ago. We've turned in our application again this year, and we hope to reach gold this time. So how do I? How do you avoid an unintentional release of natural gas or an ignition? As I briefly mentioned, call Tennessee 811. Whether you're building a house, whether you're making a flower bed, whatever you're doing that might cause you to break the ground around your residence or your business, call Tennessee 811. They're going to ask you some questions about the property, where you're going to be digging. They're going to send out all of the utilities, not just us, everybody that has a utility in that area, and they're going to mark their utilities. Now, it's not a spot-on mark. It's a generalization. There's a three-foot tolerance on either side of the paint lines or the flag markers. But it gives you an idea of where you should be digging by hand and being very, very careful. The other thing that you can do is inspect and service your appliances regularly. If you've got something in the home, natural gas logs, you've got a natural gas stove, your water heater, have them serviced. The last thing you want is to have a leak and you're unsure about whether you've got a hazard there in your home. Recognize a gas leak. How do you recognize a gas leak? We put odorant into our natural gas. When it comes through the big transmission lines, there is no odorant. Once it reaches our gate stations, we put odorant in there. And it's a typical rotten egg smell. Everybody's accustomed to that. You might also, if you're outside, and it's a natural gas line under the ground, you might see bubbling water, you might see blowing dirt, or you might see dead vegetation. Now, if you happen to hit a good-sized line, you hit a main line, it's under a lot of pressure, you could have a blowing or hissing sound. So we'll talk a little bit more in a little bit about how to deal with one of those situations. What should I? What should I do if I suspect a gas leak? First of all, leave the area immediately. We don't want you to try and investigate and put yourself in harm's way. Give us a call. That's what we do. Now, we also prefer that you call from a safe distance. So we'll talk about using landlines in a little bit as well. But don't activate any source of ignition. Sources of ignitions could be light switches, garage doors, your car ignition. So if you have a 1963 Corvette with a split rear window, leave it be. Don't try to take it out. Landlines. If you happen to call from a landline, simply set it down on the table. Don't hang it back up, because remember, it might be a source of ignition. If you happen to go and call from a cellphone, stay on the line until dispatch tells you to hang up or that they're done with you. But wait until we're done, and they'll tell you that staff is on the way. They'll ask some questions about, do you smell it inside? Do you smell it outside? Were you doing any digging? They'll ask some questions that help our staff members know what to expect when they get there. Well, what if I? What if I strike a natural gas line or an above-ground piece of equipment, such as a meter or a regulator station? We were going through the leaks/hits from last year. We actually had this happen. We had someone drop a brick on a meter, and the meter became dislodged. So odd things can happen every now and then. Well, see the previous guidelines. First of all, get away from the area. Secondly, contact us. Third, make sure that you don't start any source of ignition. Do not move or turn off any heavy equipment. A lot of contractors are aware of this. If they happen to hit a natural gas line with a backhoe or something, they understand. Simply step away from the backhoe. Don't try to turn it off. Leave it where it is. And then when we get out there and we can valve off the line or squeeze off the line, we can minimize the danger. And a lot of them are experienced, and they understand that. We have a lot of different public awareness events that we handle. You'll find us at the Easter egg hunt in the next couple of months. You always see us at the fireworks celebration. We have Halloween in the Park is one of our favorite events to attend, and we go to the United Way Golf Scramble. But I should put this last one at the bottom. We like speaking engagements. We've spoken to Rotary Club, Lions Club, senior citizens. I'll talk to scout groups. In fact, we love to speak to the younger people, try and get this message across as folks are younger. So any opportunities that we have like that. We also use Channel 3. We have radio spots. I left each one of you one of our bill inserts that we sent out last year. We do that at least once a year. In addition to that, we have, on the back of your utility bill, take a look sometime, we've got a recurring message about natural gas safety out there every month. And then we have some information on our website. Now, there is one other document that I left for y'all, and that's the survey. We enjoy doing this because it's a great opportunity to get our message out. But as the case is with any rule of regulation, we have to document it. So if you will, please, complete those at your leisure, and if you'll get them back to Mr. Hercules, I'll be glad to come and collect them. And did I stay under time?
Good.
All right. If y'all have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions for Bert?
Bert, is the biggest cause of gas leaks is it the failure to locate lines?
This past year, ironically, it was. That did come in as our number-one cause. We have to do something that's called a Distribution Integrity Management Program. It's a federally mandated thing. And it's a very good activity for us because it makes us look deep into what is causing that. We are having good contact with a lot of our contractors. I'll give some of our staff members a pat on the back, our construction inspectors, our supervisors. They do a great job talking to these contractors and letting them know, hey, we're here, call us, don't do anything. If you're unsure, let us know. But one of the other issues that you do run into with a growing system is it becomes more difficult to locate some of the lines.
How typically deep are the lines?
That's one of the parts of locating. There is no regular depth, you know? We have standards by which we have to put a service line in and a main line in. But keep in mind, over the years, between erosion, buildup of that territory, you may not have that line at the same depth that it was initially put in. So if a contractor or a homeowner is thinking, well, I've got 18 inches of clearance here, I'm good to go. First of all, you'd be surprised how quickly you can get 18 inches blow into the ground. Secondly, that might not be the case of that particular line anymore. So, anything else?
No questions.
Good questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate all you do. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Bert.
Okay, we'll move into our items for discussion tonight. First is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Pyro Shows for the 2023 Independence Day Fireworks Show. Any questions on this, council? Okay, moving on to item two, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a professional services proposal for SEC Engineering relative to the lead service line inventory requirement by the EPA.
Hello. How are you?
Nice time, Mike.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Not even comment anymore. I think you enjoy it too much.
It's great to be a Tennessee boy. First, I'd like to thank Bert. He does an outstanding job for us as safety coordinator on handling all these safety issues, public awareness, and he really does a great job. So I wanted to give him some kudos. On the lead service line, this is required by the EPA, what their goal is to be lead-free in water systems, okay? So anything after 1988 in the state of Tennessee is lead-free. We have narrowed this down to somewhere in the neighborhood of 500 services that have to be dug up and inspected. And once that happens, we'll go to the construction phase where you either remove it or through testing show that it's not impacting anything else in the system. We did get a couple of quotes on this service, and SEC was the low quote.
Questions for Mike on this?
How long does a project like this take?
We have to have the service line inventory done by October of 2024. And by the way, the EPA, there will be grant funding for this, so we're waiting for all the details to come out and kind of see how that's going to work. I'm not sure if it's going to be a matching grant or total grant 100%. So we'll see. Then after that, depending on whether things don't test well, that we have to remove, that can take a pretty substantial amount of time as well.
Okay. Mike, is there something that can be tested on-site, or does it have to be sent off?
You test the water. And we can do testing in-house.
Other questions for Mike? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda. Item three is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute Amendment Number Three with T.DOT for the Sam Ridley Widening Project.
Mayor and council, this amendment is just to move the contract from December 31, 2022, to February 28. This allowed us to get in a couple last punch items that we have, and now we have completed, and the project is starting in closeout.
Great. Question for Charles on this? Okay, item four, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the General Maintenance Agreement with T.DOT for the ramp improvements on I-24 ramp, State Route 266, which is exit 66, Sam Ridley Parkway.
Mayor, this is for the agreement because there will be a new traffic signal coming in on the Cracker Barrel side, and it's just for that, the new lighting that will go on the ramps and the interchange, and also for the electric service. Currently, this project is to be led to construction in December of this year.
Questions for Charles on this?
So I want to make sure I'm understanding that the light, it's going to replace the light that's already there, or it's going to be a brand-new light?
No, this currently won on the town side of the interstate. This will be on the Cracker Barrel side at that intersection there. There'll be a new signal coming in at that location and ramp improvements.
Where the ramp is.
Yes, sir. They'll reconfigure it. They're looking at putting in a double left going from Sam Ridley towards Murfreesboro. They're going to put a double left in there and signalize the ramp.
That gets so backed up.
And that yield sign there is hard to see, so you have a lot of people that are running straight out onto Sam Ridley. So that will all become signalized.
Okay. Okay, item five, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the General Maintenance Agreement with T.DOT for the ramp improvements, I-24 at State Route 102, which is exit 70 Ammival Road.
Mayor and council, this is the same thing before, the new traffic signals that will go in for the diverging diamond, upkeep those, lighting, and the electric service.
Any questions on this?
When's that going to start?
The right-of-way field review is in November of this year. Construction lightning hasn't been scheduled yet. So we're at least two years out if the right-of-way field review is in November.
Any update on the ramp at Ammival going towards Murfreesboro? I know we kind of had a little bit of an outcry on that.
I sent that into Murfreesboro T.DOT Maintenance, and they are getting it scheduled. I don't know if they repaired that, but they were aware of it and did send it out in on schedule for a crew.
Okay. Okay, item six, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the contract agreement with CESO for the design of two gateway signs for the town of Smyrna.
Mayor and council, this is for the CESO, the consultants who designed two gateway signs on Lowry. One will be on the north end of the town limits and one to the south side of the town limits. And we may expand that later, depending on, but first, we'll start with these two.
I think this is something we've all kind of talked about at different times of having a welcoming when you come into the town. And so I'm excited to see us moving forward with this.
So before you go, have you, is there a design already in place?
There's a preliminary design that's been, yeah.
We've looked, they've sent some in when we first, we're going out for proposals, but this is where they will start design. And once we get renderings of those, we'll bring it forward for the council and administration to look at as we go forward.
I think we're, you know, the anticipation, it'll be something similar to maybe a little larger scale, but similar to the new roundabout entrance into Lee Victory Park, that rock sign with the Monument Center. And we're working to make sure that we can figure out a way to light those coming into the community, so.
Nice.
And at some point, we'll also look at coming off of Sam Ridley Parkway and other entrances into the town to do something. And then also on 266 Jefferson Pike, but with all the construction that's scheduled right now, it's probably not.
Be able to do it this time.
We'll just wait until everything's done, so.
Mount Juliet's got some good-looking stuff off of 65. We've seen that, yeah. Looks really nice, so.
We've stretched our boundaries out as far as we can go, haven't we, on Lowry?
Yes, we're a budding Murfreesboro.
So if we get a permanent type of sign, no thinking that it would have to be moved later.
No, no, we're pretty much a budding both Laverne and Murfreesboro. That's the reason we're looking at those now, so.
Okay, item seven, approval of the list of surplus items to be sold through online auction with GovDeals. Hi, Rex.
Hello, Mayor, council. We have a list of surplus items that need to be sold at auction. The list includes IT equipment removed from service, seized vehicles, and various other items from departments. The town seeks permission to conduct an online auction to sell these items. The auction will be advertised in the Murfreesboro Post, on the town's website, and on Channel 3. All the surplus items will be sold through GovDeals and Online Auction Company, and I would like to bring to your attention that there's two homers.
Saw that.
On the list for sale.
Steve?
Yes?
It'd be his and hers for you, Steve.
I was going to say.
Don't.
Okay, any questions for Rex? We'll move on to item eight, which is consideration of a resolution to request the return of funds for unclaimed property held by the state of Tennessee.
Yes, ma'am. Passing this resolution allows the town to ask the state of Tennessee for a refund. The property is made up of outstanding checks or credit balances on closed utility accounts and vendor accounts that were held first by the town and, secondly, by the state of Tennessee.
Questions for Rex on this? Okay, you put that on the agenda. Move on to item nine, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the Amendment of Municipal Code Title 18, Water and Sewer, Chapter 3, Water and Wastewater, Tap Fee and Rate Schedule, Section 304, Special Assessment Zone, and this is a second reading. Jeff, are you taking this?
Yes, Mayor and council, this amendment would enact the Alda Brinch Basin Sanitary Sewer Assessment Zone for $2,900 plus the current base zone fee. And also while we were changing the code, doing some house cleaning, adding in some language under the Harts branch and as well as under the Sam Griffin Road to include the current base zone fee as well.
Questions for Jeff on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item 10, which is consideration of an ordinance to amend the Municipal Code Title 10, Animal Control, Chapter 2, Dogs and Cats, Section 209, Sale of Dogs and Cats. This is a second reading. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor and council, as we discussed last time, this ordinance, to my knowledge, would not affect any current establishment in Smyrna, but it would prohibit the retail sale of dogs and cats. Would not affect breeders or anything like that. And the pet stores could work with a, as an adoption center for rescues or for any other kind of county kennel, something like that.
Questions for Jeff on dogs and cats? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 11, which is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 54, Part of Parcel 8.02. Hey, Kevin?
Mr. Mayor and council, this is a plan of services for annexation of one, a part of one tract of land that has been requested. The town would be providing all services upon effective date of annexation, except for water, which would be provided by a consolidated utility district. The planning commission did recommend approval of this. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? No changes?
No, yes.
Item 12, consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation R1 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, Part of Parcel 8.02, requested by Lindsey Sadler, containing approximately three acres. The property is located on Rocky Fork Ammival Road, and this is a second reading.
Yeah, this is the annexation request. It is on Rocky Fork Ammival Road. It's about 600 feet south of the intersection with Kedron Church Road. Land use plan would support medium density, single-family residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R3 and PRD, which are the Hemse Place and Bankside PRDs in town and RM in Rutherford County. Again, the planning commission did recommend approval of this, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin? Okay, item 13, consideration of a resolution memorandum of ordinance 23-8 relative to the annexation R1 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, Part of Parcel 8.02. And then moving on to 14, consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 50, Part of Parcel 12.02, to go from PCD to C2, requested by John McCleskey. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 1.05 acres and is located on Lee Victory Parkway, and it is a second reading.
Yes, this is a rezoning request. It's on Lee Victory Parkway. It's at the intersection with Harold Lee Drive, which is the road that intersects directly across the street there from the property. Land use plan, this is, for this area is a 24 gateway character area, so certainly this zoning would be consistent with our land use plan. This previously approved, PCD is for 6,992 square feet, eight-bay automotive repair facility. So this change would revert the property back to its previous zoning of C2. The planning commission did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, we'll move on to item 15, which is discussion regarding changes for food truck permits.
Yes, last year, council and a couple of different workshops talked about food trucks and fees for those trucks. Just as a reminder, we currently charge $200 per calendar year, and that truck can operate within certain parameters under the ordinance. A rally of 300 more trucks is an additional fee of $400. We looked at the surrounding communities. We are more expensive than most of the surrounding communities. We did also talk about, at that time, that food trucks are not required to have a permit to operate at town events other than what they would pay to the Parks Department for the vendor fee. And so, or if they're used as catering a private event. If someone has a truck and they cater a private event, there's no cost there. You wouldn't have to have a permit. At the last workshop that this was discussed, we, there was a couple of main things, and we have prepared ordinance amendments to address those. One, that a brick-and-mortar store would not, they were stuck to get a permit, but they would not have to get a fee or pay the fee to get that permit, and as long as they have a store within the town limits. And then the other thing was to create the opportunity for a one-day permit, and that fee on that would be $50. I did include those draft amendments, those are zoning ordinance amendments, so this would be required to go to the planning commission first and come back to you all if you wanted to move forward with this. We also would have to, if we wanted to implement this prior to July 1st, we don't have a fee for a one-day permit, so we have to amend the budget and add that to the fee schedule. Certainly, we can do that for next year's budget very easily, but we still have to do that as well if we wanted to do the one-day permit, again, prior to July 1st, so. Staff would, again, as we did last time, we would not recommend changing the fee, but we would recommend implementation of the one-day permit at $50 and for operators of brick-and-mortar stores to be exempt from the payment of the fee.
And if they came in for a one-day the second time, then they would be charged the $200?
Certainly, if someone, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or charged 150, I guess?
Yeah, we would probably look at 150 at that point, because, I mean, unless they just want to do two separate one-day permits, I mean, at some point, you're going to, it makes sense to get a $200 fee.
Right.
A $200 permit, but, I think that would only be, that would not be for, if they have a brick-and-mortar store in town, certainly.
Correct.
This would just be if they wanted to set it for one day somewhere.
Okay.
So again, those were, that was based on the discussion, the last time we discussed this, and so that's what we would recommend.
Council, any questions or comments?
One question for clarification. So if a company decided they wanted to have an event on their premises, and they decided as part of the event, they were going to bring in food trucks, would there be, is that still a $50 charge since it's on a private property type?
If it's a private event, that they're catering a private event, then no, that's in the ordinance already.
That's what I thought. I just want to make sure on that.
If it's a private event that's not open to the public, then yes, that would be, as long as, I think we do limit it to four hours, so it's not a week-long event or something like that, is, you know, so we do limit the timing, but, but, yeah, wedding, if you have a catering to a wedding and they happen to have a truck, you know, or something like that, then that's a private event.
What happens if a neighborhood decides to have one come and set up at the pool or somewhere?
Again, that's, that would be a, they would have to have a permit at that point. That's not, that's, you know, if you're open at a neighborhood, yeah, it's going to be primarily the people that live in that neighborhood, but it would be open to anyone who came by, certainly, so.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Do you think we need to implement it immediately, or do you think we're okay, wait until July?
I'm okay with implementing this. I mean, if we want to wait on the one day till July, I think that would make sense. Otherwise, we got, this is going to be April before it'd be second reading anyway, so.
Have you gotten requests specifically for one day?
Yeah, we have. It's one of the reasons we're looking at this. So I'd like to see us if we could implement this immediately so that.
So you want to change the fee schedule before June 1st, is what you're saying?
At least add the one day. We do have a couple of events that have asked about this, so.
Okay, so what would the... Okay, so what would the, what would the timeline look like? We'd put it on in March?
April would be second reading, so, again, we would just have to have a separate budget amendment, which we could track at the same timeframe.
I would basically give you 60 days before June 1st.
Yeah, be the April, or, yeah, all of May and all of June and most of April.
Okay.
Well, you'd have, it would be, it would be approved at the first meeting of April.
Right, so you'd have all of April.
So you'd have April, May, June, and then the fee schedule would roll in July, so we would have a budget amendment for those three months. But it's just a couple of events that have asked for this, and we're trying to accommodate with that one-day permit, and I think it's the right thing to do, so I would, I would ask that we give consideration to that schedule.
I think if we're gonna change it for 2023, what's the difference of doing it early as long as staff willing to go through that process? Because it's really, the work is to get the budget, the fee adjusted and submit it, to get it back to us, so it's all really on y'all to get that work done.
And we can handle that.
And we can put it on that, this, what we would do is we would put the, what I have in the packet is the zoning ordinance amendments. We can put that on the agenda for next week's planning commission meeting, which will then come back to you in March, second reading in April, and we can, I guess, certainly put a budget amendment. It'd be relatively simple budget amendment, just to tweak the fee schedule, add that fee in, so.
Other comments or questions? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda. Anything under other we're gonna talk about?
We have one item under other that, just an announcement, Mayor, that needs to be made.
The control requires public debt incurred by the town to be announced at our next public meeting. This requires no council action, just the mayor's signature. I have attached two CTO 253s related to the inflow and infiltration correction project. It will be submitted to the Office of State and Local Finance, and both of these are for the same project that's in the downtown area. And if you would note, on the 1.3 million issue, the interest rate is 2.95%, which is the highest rate we've had in some time. It's still an outstanding rate, but they've, they've increased their, their interest rate. The other issue is for $800,000, and it's at 1.92%.
Questions for Rex on this? Thank you for the announcement.
And we will have to make that announcement on the agenda.
Okay.
For it to be.
Also, even though they're not individually listed out, we will be making board appointments at our March meeting as well, so. Okay, um, nothing, Hal? Rex, anything? Come on down, Charles.
Mayor and Council, a quick update on our road projects, Lowry Street. The contractor's been busy this week milling and paving the side roads. All those on the east side have been completed, and they didn't mill Washington Street going over the railroad tracks today, and they should be paving that tomorrow. Lowry Street, we're looking at, due to weather, possibly Tuesday or Wednesday, and right after that, we will re-strike Lowry and get the center turn lane back in. So hopefully, weather permitting, by Wednesday, that portion will be done. And street lights, just waiting for Mill Tennessee Electric to complete their inspection and energize the lights. Genie Lane Extension, we're still working on utilities in Genie Lane there, and we're looking at possibly three to four weeks to relocate a water line that was necessary due to the new sewer connection there. Spring Hill Drive, if people are hearing blasting, that, that's where it's coming from, but they do have vibration monitors, and they did do a site survey, and they are, have direct communication with the principals at both schools to let them know any time before they do blast. And Tridon Bridge, we opened bids today, and we had two bidders, and one looked very good for us, so, uh, that should be on the March agenda.
Charles, I feel like we should have a ribbon cutting for the turny lane at Lowry.
I agree.
If you want to get out there in the street to cut it, sir, you're welcome.
You're gonna hold one in.
I don't think I want to be out.
Okay, any other questions for him? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Come on down, Tom. I hear your dad's having a pretty good vacation.
Yeah, yeah, ran into a guy that you all know here, so it was kinda funny timing on that.
Small world, isn't it?
Very small world. I think he planned this trip like a year ago, bought it and everything, so just funny timing on that.
Yep. That's right, that's right, that's right.
Uh, I just wanted to announce that on, starting March 8th, we're gonna be closing down Rock Springs Road between Waldron Road and Cooks Lane. As you may know, there's a lot of potholes and significant road failures out there, so we're gonna be, the safest way to make those repairs for the guys working, bringing in heavy trucks and equipment, excavators, and walking around out there is to just shut down that section of roadway. It is gonna be open in the morning and the afternoon, for AM and the PM peak and overnight, so we won't shut that road, section of road down until about 8:15 in the morning. We'll open it back up again at 2 o'clock in the afternoon for school traffic to be able to come through that section, but that road closure is gonna start on March 8th. It's gonna last about two weeks on that section. Then we're gonna take a break for about a week, and we're gonna move it down to a section between Cooks Lane and basically the county limits to be able to go in and repair other sections of roadway there. We are gonna have message boards put out next week to let everybody know, we'll have detour signs, and also working with Heather to get that information out on Facebook and with the other PIOs in the area as well, just to make sure they know. Also, I've already spoken to the new city engineer at Laverne to make sure that they know about it, but just want to make that announcement, make everybody aware of that road closure.
You've probably already checked with this, what time does Rock Springs Elementary go, start?
Elementary schools start at 7:30, middle schools start at 8:00.
So by 8:15, they should be done.
Yeah, by 8:15, the car should be out of there and be able to close that section out.
Part of that will be during spring break, I think, won't it?
Yes, spring break is the last week of March.
Oh, is it the last week?
Yeah, I think maybe that next section will be able to hit some of that timeframe.
But we're going all the way to the county line?
Yes.
I mean, all the way to the city limits, city limits, yeah.
Right. And from the last I spoken to, the developers of Gwynn Farms, they are looking to pave Rock Springs Road and Waldron Road intersection during that week of spring break. I don't know if that's changed since then, but.
Okay.
That was it.
Okay, questions for Tom? Thanks. Kevin?
Just want to remind everybody, and just put it out there again for folks if they didn't see it the last time, we do have new flood maps, and we have them certainly available if folks are interested. We will have that on the agenda next week for the planning commission to go through the adoption process in the next couple of months to get those adopted, to get us in compliance with FEMA on the, on the new maps, so just if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to look at those for, if they have questions about their property, if they're still in, or maybe they're out now, or whatever, so.
Questions for Kevin? Thanks. Mike?
Real quick, I did put this on the weekly report. Sam Ridley Weekly Water Line Project has begun, and the INI project downtown has begun. So, four to six months, looking for a timeframe for if anything goes well. The INI project will be a mess.
That's what they're staging right before the bridge on?
That is correct.
Okay.
They're fusing pipe and everything. They should start pipe bursting next week.
Okay.
So, all the homeowners have been contacted by the contractor, which is Cleary, so they understand what's coming, but this is much needed, as you guys know, so we're.
Can you talk just a little bit about that project, just so those that are listening know what we're talking about?
So, the areas that this will really directly impacts, Coleman, Hicks, Highland, right in that area. So what we'll be doing is, we already did the smoke testing, cameraing, cleaning, all that, so we've identified sections of line that either need to be pipe bursted or replaced, manholes that either need to be relined or replaced, and even going over to the service tap to the customer, so that whole thing is, is fixing to kick off, and we'll be happy to get that one behind us.
Kind of rehabbing some, giving a little facelift, maybe?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Questions for Mike? Thanks, sir. Mike? Heather? Heather? Chief? Amber?
No, ma'am.
Brian D?
Mayor and Council, I do have a couple of things I'd like to share with us tonight. First, I want to recognize, Mike Moss is in the audience tonight, and I think most of us know by now, just want to send out our condolences in the passing of his mother, somewhat unexpected here about a week ago, and just want to let them know we're continuing to keep them in our prayers and, and keeping good thoughts for them. Also, you guys recognize that Chief Culberson's not in the audience tonight, and Chief is rehabbing from some medical issues that he's experienced recently, and keep good thoughts for our chief, and hopefully get him back here in a couple of weeks to take some pictures and shake some hands. I got a really nice voicemail, and I apologize that I could not make out all the names and stuff that were shared with us, but it was a couple that lived in Nolan's wife. I forwarded it to Chief Irvin, see if he could decipher some, some of it, but basically what happened was we had a car that was broken down, and I think I actually saw the car as I was passing through over the holiday weekend. I called dispatch, and we dispatched an officer out there, but a couple, elderly couple, that their car broke down on Jefferson Pike, they did the best they could to get it off the road, and with all that construction out there, it was somewhat of a mess, and they were just so, so thankful for the officer that came out, the professionalism, the patience that that officer showed them, because they were pretty, pretty shaken up about, you know, their car being halfway on the road out there with all that traffic. So, again, just want to say thank you to our police officers and the work that they do, and it's nice to get a positive comment, so. Also, I shared this with Mike Strange, we received an email from a couple here in town that on February 7th, experienced just before they went to bed, no hot water, they called the emergency service. We went out, and not only did our gas department, Derek Francis, but also our fire department, and I'm glad they did, because there was a detection, they had a tankless water heater that was having some issues, had a high level of CO2 in the house, and we were very diligent in, in working with this couple to make their house safe, and they just wanted to say how much, let me just read that, "We are so grateful to the guys from the fire department that came out and, for Derek, who helped ensure that our house was safe and helped to take away, take the necessary steps to keep us safe. These young men were so nice and polite. I am glad the town of Smyrna employs such great people." That's kind of nice to hear. Next, I think I've got a couple of slides, I just want to point out, one of our officers, Officer Casey Huey, was congratulated by our chief and his lieutenant, or sergeant, I'm sorry, his sergeant, on shift. Casey, Officer Huey, Huey, recently recognized the role and was recognized for identifying a driver in a vehicle that was sought in a hit-and-run here in town, and through his diligence on the streets, he was able to find that person, and we appreciate that. Also, you may have seen this on Facebook and some other things, but we just want to remind our community that right now Maple View Cemetery is in their cleanup, and we, the spring cleanup started February the 15th, and will go through the end of the month. So if you have anything out there that you would like to collect, so that we don't, you know, get rid of anything that, that means something to the families and stuff, but we will be doing the cleanup, and then you can bring those items back after March the 2nd, and then, and place them back on the grave sites, but it's one of those general cleanups where you go in and make sure the limbs and all those kind of things are out of place, and there are several items that we found that are in bad shape. We had a couple of pass-throughs that folks have put out there, and they're, they're broken down and those kind of things, so those will be removed to clean the cemetery up. Uh, next, 2022 Patrol Division Top Performers, this is a thing that the police department does every year, and there's, I think, a four-point criteria that they do to identify their top performers on each of the patrol shifts. This year, Officer Charles Eldridge on first shift, Officer Damaris Jackson on second shift, and Officer Ryan Mosley for third shift, so we want to say congratulations to those gentlemen for the fine work they're doing and the recognition from the senior management at the police department, as well as their, their peer officers for recognizing their work. Next, one of the things we've been talking about, we are hiring. It's a great place to work, and we'd love to have qualified candidates, submit applications and go online. You can look at the different job categories that we have, we have everything from the streets department to, well, I think we just filled our last position in accounting, but we've got all, an array of different jobs that are available, and we, you know, we are looking for good candidates. Another piece to the hiring that I'll go to next is we're also hiring our summer seasonal employees for our Splash Town and for the Splash Pad, so at Gregory Mills. So if you are interested in lifeguard, head lifeguard, splash pad attendant, gatehouse clerk, and if you'll look, we're paying head lifeguard some, it's 1450 an hour, lifeguard's at $13 an hour, splash pad attendant's $12 an hour, and gatehouse clerk's $11 an hour. So if you're a young person looking for summer work, these are some pretty good salaries and plenty of work, so please don't hesitate to get online and make your application for that. We are filling those roles for the Parks and Recreation Department right now, so. Next, tax season, and everybody has to get their taxes in, so just want to remind everybody again, we're working in cooperation with the United Way of Rutherford and Cannon Counties. We are a VITASite, and we do offer free tax preparation for, I believe it's $70,000 or less, household income or individual income, and you can sign up three ways. They have an online process where you can do it yourself, you can file with a virtual taxpayer, or file in person with the VITASite. The town of Smyrna VITASite is behind 315 South Lowry Street here, and you go online to the United Way website, and you can make your appointment to come in and get your taxes done. Next thing I have for you is Sunday movie matinee. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to see this, but Chris Good, our video person, she, she brought this to us about a month and a half ago, and we began to talk about this, but she has found a way to download and purchase for our Channel 3 use, a array of old movies, vintage movies, and even to the extent that if you tune in to Channel 3 on your website, or on Channel 3 on your cable channel here in Smyrna, or you can go to our YouTube channel, it's kind of like nostalgia, because the first thing you're gonna see is a Superman cartoon, like we used to see at the theaters, and then you're gonna see a classic movie. And this should be a lot of fun, but it, we're trying to put this in a situation where every Sunday at 2 o'clock, gather the family and watch a classic movie. I told her today, maybe some Godzilla movies, or maybe some Vincent Price House of Wax or something like that type movies might be fun to see, so. But we're excited about that, and, you know, she's working very hard. Her and Heather both have been very diligent in trying to bring more value to our Channel 3, PEG channel, to, to offer, I know we have some programming from NASA and some sporting type things that we're doing, so it's, you know, something that we can be proud of. Next, just wanted to recognize Jamie Geiselman, she has been promoted at the police department to our telecommunications manager. This is a position that we've needed for some time, and we were able to get that worked out, and Jamie's gonna do a great job. She's, gosh, I think she's been with us 15, 16 years in the telecommunications department, is very qualified to do this job, and she's gonna do a great job for us. Want to say congratulations to Assistant Chief James Heath at the Smyrna Fire Department. Assistant Chief Heath has been a 30-year employee with the town of Smyrna. He has decided to take his retirement and move on and do some fishing and some things. I will tell you, I really appreciated, as Chief Heath made some comments, leaving with, with the other employees, he talked about how grateful he was for what this council and what the town management has done to make it affordable for him to retire. With our benefits package and some of the things that we do for our employees, he said, you know, guys, if you're not taking advantage of this stuff, you're missing an opportunity. And I really appreciated him saying that, because I think that's one of the things that the council, and you challenged me as your town manager, and one of the things you guys had heavy on your heart was that we make sure that we take care of our employees, and I think we're doing some of those things, so it was nice to hear that. But we wish Captain, Assistant Chief Heath, the very best as he moves on, and there'll be some big shoes for us to fill. We have a chaplain from the police department that's retiring. Most of you know Bill Hunter, and we want to wish Chaplain Hunter the best in his retirement. He's served this community very well, and he's served this police department very well, and we appreciate everything he's done for us, so. Chaplain Hunter, best of luck in your retirement. Last thing I have is, what I always end with, is love where you live, people. Last thing I have is what I always end with is love where you live, people. We continue to fight the litter issues. I know this weekend I got a couple of calls where we had some mattresses thrown out on Enan Springs Road. We found a couple more dump sites. You know, keep in mind that it's not just the aesthetics of our community. I mean, you know, we, I hope we can take some pride in our community and want it to look nice, but all this also creates problems for us in stormwater and those kind of things when we get trash that's getting into the stormwater system and getting to our creeks, blocking, you know, the stormwater system up and those kind of things. So anything you can do to make sure you're disposing of your litter out of your cars, out of your trucks, and those kind of things, take it to the trash receptacles, whether it's where you buy your fuel, or if it's at your house, or it, I know the other day we were getting out of the car, my wife had me out shopping, and I looked up, and there was trash receptacles going into the stores, and, you know, I took a couple of things out of the car and took them with me and put them in the trash receptacle. It doesn't take much effort, folks, to not throw it out the window. So love where you live, and Mayor and Council, that's all I've got tonight.
Thanks. Jeff?
Nothing for me, ma'am.
Raquel?
Brian, you had quite a few things on that list there, so I was trying to make sure I wrote down. So I'll start with.
They told me I had five minutes, so I was running through them.
You had a lot in it. That was a powerhouse pack, five minutes, let me just say. So congratulations to Chaplain Hunter on the retirement. Congratulations to Jamie Geiselman for the move, the promotion with the telecommunications department. Congratulations to Officer Huey and to the top performers at the police department. Chief Culberson, hope that your rehabbing is going well, and we look forward to seeing you back here, taking all of your pictures very soon. And Mr. Moss, condolences on your loss. And also, Mark already has mentioned in his prayer about the Smyrna High School student, Ms. Janee Edmondson, and I wanted to also extend my prayers and thoughts to her and her, to her family. And I also wanted to just commend the community for coming together to support her during this challenging time after the car accident that she faced. And then lastly, I want to thank the Senior Activity Center, who had me out at their monthly meeting last week, so I thank that, thank them for that opportunity. And I think that is, I think I've gotten everything. If not, I'm sure one of the, one of these other council people's going to pick up the rest of it, so.
Tim?
Nothing really more to add, other than, Mike, you know, I've been in your shoes, and, you know, you have been in my thoughts and prayers. It's always tough to lose your mom, and I just want you to know that, you know, you've been there for me. For Janee and the Edmondson family, man, my heartfelt sympathies as far as the tragic injury that she suffered. And, you know, Raquel, you hit on something that I noticed is the rallying of the Smyrna community and the volleyball and athletic community. When you, when you see that, it speaks so highly of, you know, where you're from and the character of your town and your citizens, so again, prayers for a speedy recovery for her. Since HG's not here tonight, I'll take it on and remind everybody to be kind and shop local.
Perfect. Jerry?
Yeah, Brian, you covered a lot of ground there, so I echo what you said for all of the, all those that you mentioned, and thanks to everybody that, the work and all that they've done. I do congratulate Chief Heath and Chaplain Hunter on their retirement, and I wish them the best on that. Mike, I know we've talked before, but again, like everybody else said, condolences obviously for you and your family, and you guys have been and will continue to be in our thoughts and our prayers. Yes, last week, I had the opportunity, privilege, to be on the roundtable in Murfreesboro and WGNS with Wayne Blair and Rick Hall. We had a good time. It was, it was fun to sit there and talk. We talked about old school, Jefferson School, which your dad, Mary Estra, also went to, and we talked about that. We talked about Thurman Francis. We talked about the high school career, the town council, Seward Air Force Base, just a lot of, a lot of things. But we really had a good time. They really do a nice job in promoting our town, and I just want to thank them for the opportunity that I had, and also thank them for what they do for our town. And lastly, as it's been mentioned before, my thoughts, my prayers for Janee and her family, her school family, her volleyball family, basketball team family. So tragic, don't, no words really can describe it, and just want them to know that they have been in our thoughts and our prayers. We were at church last night, we talked about it there, and so the, like was mentioned, the community has certainly come together for this, and I thank the town for that and those around here, so. Just wanted to know that we are thinking about them and we are praying for them, so that's all I've got.
Stephen?
I won't belabor the point, so condolences to the Edmondson family, and Mike, to you and your dad. Looking forward to seeing your dad and just let him know that we're still, we're still here for him, we're still praying for him. I know he likes to come visit us, so tell him we're looking forward to seeing him. And Chief, for the, all the officers that were recognized, that I think they know how much this council appreciates them, but if they don't, make sure they hear it regularly, because we know they're, they're on the front lines, and often they are the only Town of Smyrna representative citizens see. So they're, they're doing a great job there. Also want to add two condolences, Peggy Lee, Tracy and Daryl's mom passed away this week, a little bit surprised, I think. So prayers for Tracy and Daryl lost their dad a coup, few years ago, so. And then, last thing I want to mention is my dad is having spinal fusion surgery tomorrow morning, so pray for him and my mom, as she has to take care of him for the next few days. We'll, we'll be there as much as we can, but she's the one living in the house and having to deal with the bell ringing, so to speak, so. Just pray for my dad. If you see him out, I told him I was going to kick his cane out from under him, but, you know, y'all are more than welcome to torture him as much as I would, so. Prayers for them, that's all.
Mark?
I'm not going to repeat everybody, because they've been well mentioned here. Chief, congratulations to all the people in your department for the achievements that we were just recognizing on video here. To Chaplain Hunter, he's been around a while, so wish him all the best in his retirement, and same with Assistant Fire Chief Heath. I was able to attend that, and I think he's, he's excited to be able to retire, but Brian, you mentioned some of the comments he made to everybody that was there, and that was, that was really valuable to hear coming from somebody who's going into retirement and the benefits that the town gave him with the ability to retire. I got an email, and I think it's for the city here, but I'll spread the word. I think tomorrow is Purple Day here, and the reason we're doing Purple Day here at the town is in honor of Janee's family and being a Smyrna High Bulldog, I think it's appropriate. Janee lost both her legs in this accident, and I don't know if the whole community knows this or not, but lots of prayers are still needed for that family. There's still a lot to come that has not yet been addressed, and, but she's stable, she's hopefully going to do well. There is a GoFundMe page set up for her, so if you believe in helping the family, you can find her GoFundMe page at GoFundMe. I think it's Pray for Janee, and if you're feeling implored to give, you can. And I know their family is raising money that way to help with some of her medical expenses and things that are going to be taking place. Mike, same thing, condolences from me. I know we got to visit with you a little bit and give you those condolences, but openly here publicly, we want to tell you we're all praying for you and your family, brother, and we know the loss of your mom is, some of us have been there, and it's just not easy, especially when it's sort of unexpected, you know, so. Our prayers for you and your family, and Steve mentioned Peggy Lee, and I'll mention her as well, and I'm, I'll leave it right there, so I'll give it to you later. Oh, I do have, I have a slide, but my slide's not up there. There it is. So business at its best luncheon. You can see all those smiling faces that attended. Council members, Tim Morrell, Council Member Raquel Peebles, Town Attorney Jeff Peach, Assistant Town Manager Todd Smirven, Town Clerk Amber Hobbs, Council Member Jerry Short, Town Manager Brian Hercules, PIO Officer Heather Kent, and myself were able to attend this, honoring Chris Jones for his work in the community. And so that was business at its best at the, that the chamber puts on about a week or so ago. We attended that event, that's what that is. Oh, did I get everybody?
Okay.
Didn't want to miss anyone, thank you.
Okay, a couple of housekeeping items. We were, the council was able to tour Steel Technologies, which is a business here in town, and I can't tell you how proud we are of our Smyrna businesses and appreciate learning about their industry, and we love getting invitations to come tour facilities. So if someone else would like for us to come see what you're doing and what you have going on, just let us know. We'd love to come out and visit. Smyrna murals, you can visit Rutherford TN, visit Rutherford TN, shared a snapshot of just a few of our incredible murals here in our town. Some are at local restaurants, shopping parks, and beautiful murals are all about town. Featured were Smyrna Assembly Hall, Domino's Pizza, Front Street Signs, Carpe Cafe, Pops Bar and Grill, Hoover Paint Store, Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center, and Red Bicycle. We held our community baby shower that United Way put on, and the Smyrna Police Department was overwhelmed with the amount of United Way Community Baby Shower items that we received. We want to say thank you to Smyrna for your generous donations. You always are willing to give. We talked a little bit tonight about our board openings that we will be appointing at our March meeting. We're currently accepting application for those boards, and you can go on our Town of Smyrna website to see where there are openings. February is Black History Month, which is a tribute to African-American men and women that have contributed to America and throughout the world, and in honor of this, during Black History Month, we're highlighting some of Dr. Martin Luther King's inspiring quotes and about hope and perseverance. I think everybody's talked a little bit about Janee. Janee is a 17-year-old senior that was in Chicago at, oh, sorry, St. Louis, sorry, St. Louis, at a volleyball meet and was in a tragic accident and lost both of her legs. I actually got an update at 4:30 today from the school, so I'm just going to read what they've told me. What Smyrna High School is doing, many are at a loss for what to say and what to do, but want desperately to help the Edmondson family in whatever way they can. An account has been set up for the family through the school. This will ensure that every dollar given will make it to the family. Money can be dropped off at the school in an envelope or mailed. Please write on the envelope, "Attention, Katie Bell regarding Janee." Money can be mailed to Smyrna High School, "Attention, Katie Bell, 100 Bulldog Drive, Smyrna, Tennessee." Mark talked about the GoFundMe account that has been set up. If you're interested in other ways to help the family, you can reach out to Coach Bell by email, bellek@rcschools.net. There's also a link on the Smyrna High School webpage that will talk a little bit about the help for Janee. An update on the GoFundMe page, initially, the goal was $100,000. As of 4:30 today, it was at $400,410 with over 6.4,000 donors. February 23rd, this is an update from the individuals who have set up the site, and this was as of 2:21, which would have been, let's see, today's Thursday, that'd been Tuesday. Janee was alert and was able to interact with her parents and her sister. This was a blessing for them to see her open her eyes and engage with the room. Understandably, she is in considerable pain. Her doctors have referred to her as a fighter throughout her surgeries. Janee remains in critical condition, and her wounds are under constant evaluation. She has undergone an amputation for both legs and at least four surgeries as of right now. Due to the medical care she has and will continue to require, the bills are accumulating quickly. Due to anticipated bills and other needs that may arise, such as increased medical bills, prosthetics, home renovations, missed work, et cetera, we have raised the goal to 900,000. We are overwhelmed by the love and support shown to the Edmondsons by the St. Louis Community Volleyball Clubs, as well as people all across the country. We are so thankful for your kindness and generosity. In solidarity with the Edmondson family, we are, we ask that you wear purple, her favorite color, to any volleyball tournament, event, or occasion you may have. We believe purple is a unique color. It exudes joy and is a signature color for Janee's quest as a survivor, not as a victim. They also said that Smyrna High School is asking everyone to join the Bulldog family tomorrow in wearing purple as a show of support for our beloved Janee. Please post your pictures and use hashtag #PlayForNae on Twitter, and then on Twitter, please tag @SmyrnaBulldog. So I think we can show our support, whether it's through monetary things or by wearing your purple tomorrow to support one of our own. I think there's going to be long days to come, and we need to make sure we're keeping this family in our, in our prayers for many days to come. Council, is there anything else? Nothing else, we're adjourned.